Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, Rambert Town Council. Do I have any apologies?
We have apologies from councillor Heatherington, who has personal commitment, councillor Alburn, a family commitment, councillor Hudson, who's unwell, and councillor Young, who's unwell. No apologies from councillor Driver.
And councillor Alburn?
So councillor Alburn has a family commitment.
Thank you. Item two is declarations of interest. To receive declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda, councillors are reminded to declare any dispensations granted. No, no declarations of interest. Item three then is minutes. 3.1 is to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, held on the 15th of May 2024. Minutes 105/24 to 116/24 as a true record.
I don't think I was there.
Somebody proposed that it was a true record.
It seems a long time ago now, doesn't it?
A long time ago.
I think councillor Austin.
Councillor Austin and councillor Quittenden.
All in favour.
All those in favour. Okay. 3.2, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, held on the 11th of September 2024. Minutes 197/24 to 2000/24 as a true record.
Proposed.
That's proposed. Seconded by...
Chair, if this you like.
All those in favour. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is accounts and budgets. To receive and note, one, the financial comparison, income and expenditure to the 26th of September 2024. Going to take them one at a time.
Yes, I think possibly one and two together, the budget and the cash book.
And then item 4.2, financial statement, the cash book to the 26th of September 2024. I think this is the halfway point in the budget.
Um, may I?
Yep.
So I think that the cash book doesn't show much specific information, but looking through the budget comparison, please do ask if there's anything that you're not sure about or you're surprised about, that there's an underspend or an overspend. One thing to be aware of is that not everything is received evenly throughout the year. So expecting us to be halfway through the year and halfway through the budget, it doesn't work out like that. For example, there's certain things like we're now paying the rates a year in advance, so 100% of the budget's been used up. The allotment rent and water looks very low, but then the invoices have only just gone out for the year. But if you've got any questions about specific, anything that looks like it's an underspend or overspend, please do let me know.
Councillor Austin.
What sorts of things are included in miscellaneous income?
It's usually where there's maybe been a grant in the year that we don't know about. So the funding for the drinking fountain on the beach.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
Who's on the subcommittees, David?
Sorry?
Who's on the subcommittees?
Which subcommittee?
Subcommittees, who is on there?
Which subcommittee?
It's the subcommittees to receive because...
Oh, not on that part of the agenda yet.
Oh, jumped forward.
Yeah.
So that's the next item.
Sorry, sorry.
We're still on the financial statement. No other questions? Can I propose that we note, that we receive a note for those two reports? I propose, all those in favour? Let's carry on. Then item three, 4.3 is to receive a report from Miss Alfredo Townclark and consider the possible variances contained therein.
Thank you Chair. So variances were approved by the council and you're being asked to consider and make recommendations. The first one, I think, is regarding the allotment, and I think there is a must-do here. There's more money required in one budget than another. And it's when the budget was drafted last year, we were expecting to make a capital purchase for new toilets, but in the end, the resolution was for the installation of portaloos. And we're still holding a large sum of money in the allotment capital projects, but not in the revenue budget, which is paying for the portaloos. So there's a recommendation that 12,672 be viated from the allotment capital budget to the revenue budget to cover the cost of the portaloos. There are currently no known capital items to be purchased for the allotment site.
Can I just ask, I mean, the allotment sites, are they still profitable? Profitable? I know they're useful, but I just wondered whether, over the years, we've had lots of problems with allotments, as you probably know.
So the allotments, they cover themselves. The council is not obliged to spend money on the allotments, and the allotments should be able to pay for themselves. And the income does matter.
I think the portaloos would be more popular than the old town.
As long as they don't get flushed with cash.
Yep.
I just wanted to say that bar makes complete and utter sense.
Okay.
Of course it will, yeah. I think it's... Are we going to take these one at a time? And because...
I think we probably should. Do we need to?
I think so, so that it's not confusing at the end.
So let's vote on this, and I propose that we, seconded by councillor Quittenden, all those in favour? Let's carry on.
The next one is community services grant. The community services grant had a budget of 40,000. The balance, as at the end of June, and continuing, is nil. The committee is asked to consider a motion from councillor Green that this budget be increased by 10,000 from the capital project and asset acquisition budget. I was just wondering why it's nil?
Because I've spent it.
That's just a nice... Thank you, clair. Incisive and detailed explanation.
You were asking what we spent on that.
Why is it, yeah, I mean, how come it's been spent so quickly rather than against expectation? I'm not sure what has been spent on, but that's part of the question, thank you. The significant items that this usually contributes towards is Citizens Advice Bureau, which I think was about 20,000 pounds. And then there was also a summer money to Pie Factory. And then the amount that was left over was, I think someone requested this amount, and we said, well, we'll give them the rest of the community services grant. So they ended up with a £0.41, type of sum which took us down to nil. Any objections? It makes sense to move money around. I just wondered, I just thought if it's nil at this stage, I just thought it would be worth having...
I'm not proposing the increase for any particular reason, but just so that we've got...
That's my first question.
Just so that we've got a budget there.
So that makes complete sense as well then, thank you.
So is that agreed?
Agreed, yeah.
Thank you.
The next one, new Radford House staff. And this was something that was very speculative, but was included in a kind of, just in case. And it was where, before we knew that there was a further planning application required for Radford House and other things that delayed the project, this time a year ago, we were potentially looking at Radford House being developed and operational come the new year in January. And there's, there was a lot of assumptions here. I mean, it could, there still needs to be a discussion about whether the town council is going to choose to run Radford House itself or another organisation. But if it was going to be the town council, there was a sum of money put in for the expectation that there would be some staffing required. But we're not at this stage. And so actually, there's 5,500 pounds in that budget, which is, in reality, is not going to be required this year. But maybe we should use it.
So where would it go to?
I could suggest it could top up to either the capital projects and asset acquisition or project contingency. Project contingency is the smaller unknown projects that come up in the year, like the recent decision to paper contribute to removal of the phone boxes.
Councillor.
I just wondered, obviously, we've just taken 10,000 out of capital projects and asset acquisitions. And I was just wondering what the state of the two projects that are being suggested and which one is the money best put into. No objections to it, it's just a case of which one, I'm not sure which one. Let's go with one. Thank you.
Do you have a preference?
I would say that the capital projects one is the more long-term option. But bearing in mind, can take things out if it is required. I just think, so, I just think it's a case of rather like councillor Green was just saying, if you want it where you're most likely to need it, rather than having to have it keep coming to here and keep moving stuff around. So it was just a case of where is it most likely to be needed in the next six months? And I'll go with your answer on that, I think.
Can I just ask about what we think now is going to be the timescale for Radford House? And obviously, I know that there are unknowns in there, but when are we thinking we're going to have to make a decision about how we operate it? And when do we think that operation is likely to start realistically?
So I think the decision will come to the members before Christmas. More details to follow, of course, tomorrow night.
Yes.
But I think...
I just wanted, in this context, to understand a bit more about.
And then for the arrangements to be in place next, I think maybe third quarter next year? Or... But to be confirmed tomorrow night by project manager.
Yes, a little bit more, yes, I was just trying to...
That's certainly an excellent idea.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
So, is that agreed?
Just a vote. A vote, please.
Yeah, that's agreed, thank you.
And the fourth item was over budgeted on staffing salaries. And I would suggest that it looks like we're going to have an excess of 75,000 pounds in that budget, which is, we've had an extended period of sickness absence by one member of staff who was only on statutory sick pay. Nearly five months without a third technician, which was waiting for the technicians to let us know when they were ready for that new member of staff and over budgeting. The local government association pay award for 2425 is still being negotiated with the unions. That figure is actually already taken into account and deducted, and I think there's still 75,000 available, even once that pay award is agreed and backdated. I would suggest maybe letting that calculation take place first. The last two years, the local government associations and the unions have confirmed their decision in November. But I was quite happy to let members know that this is coming and there's a significant amount of money there, which I could report back at the next meeting to firm up the exact amount and consider where to put it.
I propose that we leave it there for now, until we know the pay award. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All agreed? Thank you. Next item then is item five, subcommittee. This is a proposal by me. We have a subcommittee or even a committee to run our two properties for us for two reasons. One is I was really disappointed that we, in terms of the custom house, that we hadn't been maintaining it as, perhaps as closely as we could have been. And then we had to find a quite a considerable amount of money to catch up, which we're doing, it's not a problem, and we're doing it. But it would have been better if we'd have had proper maintenance over the years. And secondly, because Radford House is now slowly approaching the point where we'll be managing it as a property going forward for the council. And I think we needed something, we need something that meets more regularly than F and GP to manage those two things. And I am proposing probably a subcommittee of council, because council meets more regularly, to take care of that. And I would be interested in other members' opinions. Do you want to...
No, no, the only question I had was, which you've addressed, is to think about whether this is going to a committee that sits under F and GP as a subcommittee or whether it will be a classic committee sitting under the, reporting directly to the council.
Councillor Quittenden, then councillor Austin.
I hear what you're saying about suggesting that because of the need to report more quickly, that it may be better sitting under RTC rather under F and GP. That makes sense. I think it's a good idea to have some way of managing what's going on more efficiently, because exactly as you said, we've not really kept on top of it. I don't know that a subcommittee or committee is necessarily the right one. It may or may not be. I think I see it as no right or wrong of what works for RTC. The only thing I do think is that we have to bear in mind that whatever we do today in three years' time, we're going to have another different council. And the people who are here today may not be here in three years' time or two and a half years' time. So what works for us today has to also work with councils going forward in the future. And that's my comment, and I don't have a lot to say. It's a comment rather than anything else to throw out there.
Councillor Austin, then councillor.
Broadly, I'm supportive of this idea, it seems to me very sensible. But I noticed that we've got an item later about keeping a closer eye on the allotments. And I'm just thinking, didn't we used to have an assets committee? An asset management committee, something like that? I'm sure when I was on the council before, there was something, there was a, that dealt with allotments and with property and with, you know, whatever other odds and sods we might take responsibility for. And I wondered whether that was, it was worth checking what we'd had before and whether it might be for purpose again.
Yeah, we've got Charlotte Court too, I suppose.
Yeah.
Councillor Charlotte? Unless you can answer that, can you?
At the moment, those things sit under F and GP.
Yes, I think we used to have a separate committee, that's all I'm saying.
This place and the cost is rising all the time as the fire station. It must be a good concern that the children are expensive, both of them. Even the fire station is expensive. It's a thing that I would never bought in the first place, myself personally, my own personal thing. Because it's a money pit. People with rams, they want to just make sure our money's spent wisely.
When you chair the council, when we bought it? You was?
Yeah, I did, yeah, I told Richard Styles, don't buy it. But like you say, a lot of things fled. I'm in the cost of this place. And quite rightly what you said. Years ago, we was in between one council leaving and new people coming. So the decisions we make now might not happen. And we don't want to lumber people, anyway, that's my own opinion.
Councillor.
I was just going to say, picking up on what councillor Quittenden was saying, what councillor Charlotte was saying. Actually, we are making decisions now, perhaps, to introduce a new committee and in the same way, our successors can get rid of anything that we've instituted that they don't find useful, can't they? I mean, that's how it works. So we're not, you know, we're setting something up that works for us. It may not work for the next councillor, it may.
So just to be clear, are you suggesting that it should be an asset?
Well, I was just wondering about whether we should discuss the possibility of it being an assets committee and going broader than just property in the light of the later item about somebody to keep a closer eye on the allotment. And as you say, Charlotte Court and maybe, you know, other...
And whatever else we make us.
I seem to remember that the assets committee in 2019 was disbanded or rather brought under F and GP.
I think it was from before.
I think remembering that time, picking up on what councillor Austin was just saying, is that most of us were new, didn't really know what we were doing, and someone said, this is a good idea, we get rid of this committee and stick it under F and GP. And I think there is this kind of like, oh yes, okay, kind of... The first couple of months when you're here, the reality is, it's like you're in a whirlwind and you don't know what you're doing. So I think that's where I'm coming from, it's like, you know, you try and lay the groundwork, and I appreciate that it can easily be undone, but you try and lay the groundwork for something no matter who is in this room, new, old, young, old, whatever. And so, but I do think that there is a need to take this back out. Maybe that decision we made six years ago wasn't the brightest one.
It would be good to hear from the rest of the council too.
I think, I think so. I also think there are some other things that are going on. If it's an assets committee, what would we want to call an asset? So you would have mentioned Charlotte Court. We still have on the agenda the bank stand and the lift. So those are potential assets to come under an assets committee. So I think it's a bigger picture. So I think in principle, yes. But I think probably we need to pad it out a bit more.
I pretty pad it out. The council.
As I just say, years ago, we used to have a side visit on the allotments. Have any of us, any of the new ones been on the allotments and seen them? It's worth a visit. Have you ever been?
Yes, I've been.
Yeah, I've been too.
Yeah, I've been too.
What's that, sir?
Yes.
At the moment, it's all really managed by Laura, by Artan Clark, who brings decisions to council. And I'm just wondering whether this would make more work for you, having committees to make decisions, or not?
Yeah, because I think there would be a similar, a similar level of questions being asked, but just in a different way.
Right, yeah, okay.
Joseph, if you have too many committees, we'll be every night, won't we? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So some of this could be taken in as we, you know, now. Unless people want to come out Monday, not Tuesday, not Wednesday, Thursday, but Saturday. Joseph, you can have too many committees.
That's why we set up this... That's why we swapped, so that not everybody was on every committee.
Well, it is a huge, or will be a huge part of what?
Yeah.
Council business.
Yes, it will be.
How much work does this take away from F and GP in that same sense?
Well, probably a fifth or sixth of that. Fifth or sixth of the work.
Fifth or sixth.
Well, I'm going to propose that we don't do what I've suggested, that we make a proposal to council to look at the rights and wrongs of setting up an assets subcommittee. Is that seconded? Item six is custom house room hire. To receive a written report from Townclark and consider the questions asked therein regarding room hire at the custom house.
Thank you Chair. So room being this room and...
Could I just add, we have that room downstairs, don't we? We could include in this. Can you do that?
Yes, absolutely. So the room downstairs is used four days a week. But every once in a while, very infrequently, but we have taken bookings for other things in that room. The regular user does know that they do not have monopoly on that room. It needs to, they need to know that other people do go in there occasionally. So it, three questions. But the background at the moment is that the chamber can be hired to community groups and churches free of charge with a voluntary contribution only. Businesses to continue to pay for room hire. I understand that before Covid, I think actually the room was much more frequently in use. The hire charge for businesses is 10 pound per hour plus the fees below. And then even though community groups and churches can hire the room for free, there are still some charges that are applicable, an admin-free use of equipment, a call-out fee. Currently, there's very few bookings. We've got four local organisations that come in once a month. The town is mainly used for our own business activities and also we do let it be known to TDC that they can come and use the building so that actually to try and encourage them to have things over here and to be with us. The change that's flagged this up is that when we think about Radford House closing, there's actually quite a lot of activity at Radford House that have now been running for some time and would like to continue to operate whilst Radford House is out of action. And we could either say, no, you need to find somewhere else, but then risk that organisation not coming back to us, or we can try and host a variety of things here. There's quite a few activities at Radford House that just won't, won't be suitable for this room. But the ones that are... But the ones that are, we're already getting inquiries from people saying, well, can, can we have our activity here next year? And so in advance of that, uh, there's a draft hire agreement. Our, our previous hire agreement was, uh, got rather scant on details and this is much more appropriate to cover our liabilities. The other question is around higher charges. Do we want to, um, match our higher charges at Radford House and the custom house? Um, and I've included in here the current higher charges for Radford House. Otherwise, there's the risk that we are actually, um, doing ourselves a disservice at Radford House if people realise that they can come here for free.
Sorry. Um, I mean, it's a different thing. You can hold events from here. And I think they ought to, they ought to be different fees. And you probably want to hire this place for a day or half a day because you'd go mad. But, um, you might Radford House in the evening. I think that, and it's a bigger space.
So yes, there's definitely a lot of activities at Radford House that we don't, we don't have anywhere else. Um, but there are activities where there's, um, where there's a group who are meeting and sitting down and talking. Um, or we've had inquiries from the choir visiting at Radford House, um, would like to come here. So that there are certain bookings that are transferable and it's actually just how do we, um, is there any changes to be made in preparation for increased bookings here? Um, and the third thing to be aware of is around staffing. Um, when we have activities in this room and during office hours, it's, it's easy for letting people in and out, but it does, it does cause a little bit of a disruption where you're where you're cutting the building in two. And then for activities out of hours, they don't disrupt the business functions. But then we have to have a member of staff come out and open and close the building. Um, so there, there would be a, we're not there yet, but just to be aware that there could be a point that if there was loads of activities happening here, I could well come back to you and say, there's a, there's an officer problem or a, a staffing requirement here.
So what are you asking us?
Uh, so it was to approve the hire agreement. Um, it's not included in these printed ones. See if it was.
I don't think I've seen.
No, I haven't seen it. We certainly need a hire agreement.
Um, so that, no, it goes straight to.
Councillor Bridgerton.
I'm going to say on the hire agreement, um, one of the things that we took into account when to come to Laura was the attention to detail on things like hire agreements and in the absence of actually being able to see it. I'm quite willing to trust it. Have confidence in her ability to write a hire agreement is appropriate. So I know perhaps we shouldn't do that, but, um,
We certainly need one.
We certainly need one and I can see the sense of that. I think, I wanted to just ask, the, um, the room downstairs, not the little room, but the big restaurant part at the back. Do we have access to that to use for hiring out or whatever? I mean, what is happening with that at the moment in that sense?
The, uh, the assignment of the lease is still taking place. That the tenant has sole occupancy of that area. Uh, they understand that there are times when we can go in there to use the lift, but nothing more. It's not an area that we have access to.
And they're paying the fee.
Chair, Radford House again. Is that making money or is there a cost to us? Is that making money or is it a cost?
It's a cost.
I did read it was.
There's a cost to us at the moment, but that will all be discussed at a special meeting.
And, and the cost is, we've got a figure on the, on the, the cost to us?
Sorry?
Have we got a figure to the cost to us?
I don't have to hand now.
All right, sorry.
But, but we're, we're having a special, as you know, we're having a special meeting
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow about that. Councillor Austin.
Um, I just wanted to ask about the, to make a comment about the, the higher fees. I mean, it makes perfect sense to me that we should, should formalise that. Um, I see what councillor Maitland's saying about it being a very different sort of a venue. But I equally think that we were in danger of undercutting ourselves if we're not careful. So I would have thought that a higher charge for this room should be somewhere approaching what we charge for the main room at Radford, even though it is bigger, because otherwise we are in danger of, of groups deciding that they're all plump to come here. And I do think that we need, I, I know, having seen a variety of meetings that I've been in where the staff have been considerably disrupted. That is something we, we need to think about and maybe take that shoes on because
Do you want to reserve how now this room until when Radford House has to close? Or would you want to advertise it from now?
I think in the light of the fact that we are paying out a lot for, for refurbishment here and the work at Radford, I think we should probably be advertising in there. Or as soon as we can agree on.
Is that agreed?
I wanted to just.
Do, do, pass it now?
I was just going to say, maybe we could charge more for having this place in the evening because there will be
Because there will be extra costs. Yeah.
And they're usually different sorts of events in the evening, not those events.
Yes, and people expect to have to pay for an extra number of staff, don't they? Yeah, have a building unlocked. As well as, um, an increased charge on evening, I also suggest weekends.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. Yes. Um, to ma, to match Radford House?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's proposed, seconded. Is that, are we in favour of that? Yep, that's carried. Did you have another?
I only really wanted to comment along the lines that because of the disruption it causes to our staff during the working day, we don't really want to encourage too much use of this room on long term. So I think there needs to be a message behind this that once Radford House is back up operational, everything will go back there. Rather, because, because it is disruptive, um, when, when this room is in use and so.
We could do that.
I just, that, that was my only comment was that within it, there needs to have a message that this is a temporary arrangement.
That's the kind we can do with.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes. Uh, may I ask whether members are happy to delegate? Um, coming up with a suitable, uh, hire agreement myself in the absence of it today, or would they like me to take it to the next council meeting?
I'd like you to take it on yourself.
Yeah, it's thorough.
Inform us.
It's very thorough.
Yep, thank you. Might I just ask one question? There's a list of charges here on the, on the first page of the paper and there's two admin fees. Is that just a typo?
Typo, that's one.
I was trying to work out what different sorts of administration we might, yeah, okay, thank you.
Next item then is item seven, 2025, 2026 budget. Two parts to this. First part is to consider and approve a draft reserves policy.
Thank you, Chair. So within our, um, our larger budget, for the last couple of years, there's been, um, £250,000 um, put aside as a general reserve. And this is something that we should, we're aiming not to spend it. This is the, the real emergency pot.
Really, Dan?
Yeah. And this reserves policy just seeks to put in, um, uh, put in writing why we've got that, the legislation behind it, how we've come up with that figure and how it's to be used.
So it's formalising what we're allowed to do? Any questions?
So basically it's just allocated £250,000 for any moments.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
Yeah, sort of. Is it intended that some of it might be used for Radford House?
Well, if, if Radford House turned out to be a a disaster, then council could
After taking two.
Could allocate it to there, I suppose.
But, but it's no intention.
No, we don't anticipate having to use this money for Radford House, no. It's more, you know, say we were hit by cybercrime or something, we'd still have to pay our staff and this wouldn't enable us to do it.
If we were, if that boat were to explode off there and we had to rehouse everybody or something like that.
It's true, imagine too bad.
They, they, aren't we obliged to keep reserves?
Yes, yes.
So reserves are reserves. Thank you.
Sure our auditor would. Really won't, we won't, do we? Um, so all those in favour of the proposed policy? It's carried.
Might I ask a related question, which is about the, maybe come in later, about the balance of our, um, of our bank accounts between the deposit account and the regular accounts. We set up the deposit accounts, didn't we? But it, it feels to me still that we should be putting them all into the deposit account and I wanted to understand why, why they're not doing really. But that may not be an appropriate question for this point in the agenda, I don't know.
I can answer it. Um, it was resolved to put in, um, £750,000 into a, um, what described as a general savings account with instant access. And it was resolved to put in another £750,000 into, it was again with Unity, but it was, um, more controlled. It's a fixed term. Um, the, the setting up of said account is, it is what, where the delay is.
All right, okay.
Um, but also I think what we're recommending in practice, we might want to reduce for cash flow purposes and not put in the full £750,000. But also waiting for that account to materialise.
Makes sense, thank you.
So that's agreed then. Second part, seven point two. To receive a written report from the town clerk regarding budget setting 2025, 26 and to give guidance on how to proceed.
And so I'd envisaged actually start producing a draft budget for the next financial year for this meeting. But explain to councillor Green and Heatherington that actually I think this meeting is just taking place a little bit too early. Um, and that actually a, um, an extra meeting may, maybe around November would timetable a little better in the year. Um, in advance of that though, there's 12 items in my report. Um, of, of things that I'm aware of for next year. Would members like me to, to run through all of these? Yep. Uh, so first of all, um, there's three bud, three budgets to come out from under the town promotion umbrella. Um, community ad magazine, marketing website. Uh, this change is supported by the town promotion committee chair and the officers. The reason being that this media is not promotion of the town, but promotion of the town council. Of course, town promotion committee will inform content occasionally, but we think these are a better suited outside of, um, town promotion. Thinking about the earlier discussion, these, it might well be that these could sit under F and G P. If F and G P is then moving some things on towards assets.
Yep, happy with that.
Um, uh, the councillors funded the portaloos at the Western Undercliffs for two years now. Um, uh, I was thinking of possibly putting this in the budget, taking this as a, something, obviously up to the members to decide. But actually, do we want to consider that this is something we're going to start doing? Or just continue to consider on an annual basis?
That's recruited.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yes, continue.
Yes, continue.
Yes, there might be something better.
Uh, yes, continue.
And district council does have the provision of toilets of the Western Undercliff on its list. But it is literally the last item on this since it was left out altogether and I popped up a cabinet and said, could we have it on? And they went, yes. But obviously it's, it's a very low priority in comparison with some of the others. So it's, it would, you know, if that district council got a windfall or was able to bid for a large amount of money for public conveniences, we might get something there. But I suspect during the life of this council, we probably won't see anything happening.
So yes.
Uh, a rent review of the custom house is due to take place, um, for a change to take uh, take place, come into effect in March next year. Um, I've already been in contact with the landlord's agent to start that discussion. The rent reviews take place every five years.
That's an item for a new committee.
The landlord did not review the rent for several years and so there was a midterm review in 2022. In case you're wondering why this is coming round again so quickly. Um, but we, we did know that one in 22 was going to have a midpoint review before proper review in 2025. Uh, the landlord is entitled to ask for an open market rental value. Uh, they're not entitled to ask for more. Uh, this is not an exact science and there, there is a level of negotiation. An independent arbitrator can be utilised if required, but preferably not because then there's a cost. Um.
So at this stage, you're just warning us.
Yes, that is, that is coming. Um, we've got, uh, the local government association has tabled, um, an uplift offer of £1,925 uh, pounds for the staffing salaries. This is in the current year. Um, it's been the same, I don't know whether that's going to be approved or not, but it is, it is something that's out of our hands.
So this is a fixed amount for every grade? Interesting.
If this, uh, a, a set amount across all the grades has actually been the, uh, same, this is the third year, I think.
It boosts the lower, boosts the lower paid people.
And so, uh, I think for next year's budget, we'll assume that, that the same, the same is, that is similar again.
Do you know what it amounts to in percentage terms?
Oh, no. Um, and it, it'll be variable. So I think last year I wouldn't, I wouldn't put money on this, but I think it meant that the, um, our lowest paid staff received maybe about a nine percent increase.
The overall bill, what is it, about five percent, I suppose?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the town promotion budget has already been considered by the committee and we've got a recommend, uh, recommended budget there. Um, this will go in the
Sorry, can I just say, um, we obviously were noting the ones that you just said, but there is no, I don't have an appendix one.
Uh, I'm just saying that it will be included in the draft budget without amendment. It will be as, as received from the committee. Within the current year budget, there were ring fenced projects carried forward from Within the current year budget, there were ring fenced projects carried forward from the last financial year, totally two hundred and thirty three thousand. When drafting next year's budget, I will assume that all this money has been spent and there's no outstanding work to be completed. If there is anything still to do, the council could again consider firing the, the funds forward. That would be a consideration for maybe around February, March next year. Or indeed, if something hasn't been completed, so.
Okay.
Or indeed, if something hasn't been completed over two financial years, actually, is there a problem there?
It's just a warning that the people responsible for these budgets need to get them spent, otherwise they'll lose them. Or could lose them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm watching ours. I'm, I'm intending to meet with Dean and Rebecca in about November, December to make sure we get our environment sorted out.
East Cliff Lift and actually, and the costs remain unknown. We're still waiting for T D C to arrange an asbestos survey of the building. Until such time, the lift engineer and the architect are not able to access the building and ascertain any further information.
Can we ask our chair to reply?
As usual, charming.
Yeah. It's persuasive charm. It's gone on too long.
With regards to a general uplift for inflation, I was at a, a recent finance conference where I asked what everyone else was doing. And actually, the officers present from the local government association were suggesting five percent. So this is not across the board. There's certain, things like utilities, our gas or electric, they're locked in. It'll be for the things that actually are not locked in. And, and also for the cost of things like purchase of tools and equipment.
State of the world at the moment, inflation's going to go up.
I'd recommend that operating contingency now be called general reserves, which ties in with our general reserves policy. General reserves is the expression that's used within legislation. As per previous years, when drafting a budget halfway through the year, I will assume that all income is going to be received and all expenditure will be paid come the end of the, the current year. I'll assume that there's going to be no balance brought forward, but of course, there will be. Which will be a mixture of ring fenced budgets that were automatically carried forward as allocated. And as per the current and last year, I will assume that members want to add any balance is carried forward to the capital projects and asset acquisition budget. But that will be for you to confirm in the new year when you know what is, what is carried forward. I would suggest that having a, a ring fenced custom house reserve budget would be a good idea. At the moment, the repair and maintenance budget covers things like small general repairs. And also a variety of contracts, like the gas safety certificate, the boiler service, the lightning conductor service, lift services and inspections, fire safety inspections. But as we've found in the last couple of years, when things do come up with custom house, they're significant. I'm not quite sure how much longer our boiler can keep being repaired. And so I'd suggest that I think we should actually start having a budget for those larger emergencies here. Or thing, or, or not even emergencies, but it's been recommended that the work going on on the windows, we should actually revisit the front, the windows at the front, we should revisit every three years. The windows at the back every five years. And so I would suggest five thousand pounds, possibly more, we actually start to put aside into a, a ring fenced larger repairs and maintenance of the custom house.
This'll be a budget for the new committee if council approves it.
Where there are other known unspends and overspends in the current year, you've, you've already been asked to consider that with fire months. And these, these budgets will then be amended accordingly for next year. Where we know that there's more required in allotment revenue to cover the portaloos, this will automatically be in place for next year. So in addition to the above actions, members are asked to give guidance on any specific changes or aims that they'd like to see in next year's budget for officers to work up. So this, this is not an opportunity to throw in a load of new projects, council hasn't approved.
Nobody did notice, nobody did read the minutes.
But it is a notice that by November, if people do have.
People do have projects.
They need to do some work to bring them. Council show.
Can I just ask if, if you've got a landlord, I mean, we're buying a good venue for this. And we're leaving this place probably better than it's ever been. You're a landlord and you need a new boiler, why can't the landlord do that actually with a house? I mean, if you're renting a house, can't the landlord? Unless you've got a full repair and lease on everything.
We have a full repairing lease on everything. If we fail to repair the building, the landlord can come in and do the work. But it's preferable not to do that because then we don't have any control of the costs.
Just trying to save us money.
Nice try. Is that everything?
So members are happy to get a note and I'll, I'll crack on.
Thank you. Next item is item eight. Annual arboretural condition. Trees.
So this is the annual health and safety inspection of our trees, which are across the allotment sites. Montefiore Woodland and Charlotte Court. And all of the actions and recommendations contained therein will now get quote from the tree surgeon to undertake. There's a couple of actions in here for Fanat District Council because of their, their trees bordering or, or, or on our land. And T D C has confirmed that these have all been added to their list for, for action. And I think it's quite imminently, I think we're coming up to the time of the year when they do their, their tree work. So everything in this report is on their list.
Yes.
Are they the ones that we've managed for them?
So this is where on, like where some of our land is adjoining theirs, if it's one of their trees that's, that's growing over and causing a problem on our land.
And our trees on their allotments that we manage.
Our responsibility.
The cemetery trees seem to give quite a lot of problems to some of the people in whatever that road is that goes on the back of their new houses. I've been trying to sort it out and totally failed. But T D C are supposed to maintain the cemetery trees. Yep.
I mean, T D C have been quite busy along London Road. They've done all the low branches. And they've actually taken it all away because otherwise you come into Ram's getting the branches, been laying there. There's only one, there's a tree down in front of Cannon Street. I don't want them to cut it down, but it's a, a dead branch that's been there years. It could be, just tidy it up, don't cut the bloody tree down.
This one, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's down for, for felling. I think it's, it's come up on the T D C list.
It's a shame.
Yeah. We have talked about the poor state of it in the past in this council, haven't we?
What do you want?
Just to note.
Note the report.
Very interesting.
And then we'll bring the, bring the quote from the tree surgeon to the council when received.
The aerial photographs of the allotments made me think about the field behind Canterbury East and Canterbury West. As a possible extension.
Extension, yeah.
And I've given the John Clark the names of the owners to, to proceed. Okay, thank you. Is that noted?
Noted.
Okay, but, yeah. Item nine is Harbour Street Gate. To receive a written report from Mrs Morgan, technician manager, providing an update on the management of the Harbour Street Gate and consider the recommendations contained therein.
Thank you, Chair. So Harbour Street Gate was installed to help with traffic, enforce a traffic regulation order. And this report seeks to give you an update on the management of the gate and some concerns that we have. I don't know what the original plan was for who was going to open and close the gate. But the, we did approach the shop owners on Harbour Street and there weren't any volunteers. So it's the, the technicians who open and close it. And it needs to be opened at five o'clock, but our technicians finish at four. It, it's something that, 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 there is a plan because that, that's been in place for a couple of years now. Because actually, one of our technicians stays an hour late every day in order to give his wife a lift home from work. So the, the management of the gate is is, is rather, rather ad hoc and reliant, reliant on
It's working out.
And also for the staff to come out, to cover it on Saturdays and Sundays, which generally falls to two members of staff who live the nearest. Between Christmas and New Year, the last couple of years, I've said, lock it open. I don't, I don't, I want to have the staff to have a break from the gate. Also, we, it's sometimes locked open if it's particularly windy. Within my report, Mrs Morgan's report, it explains how at the moment, it gets bolted closed, but not actually locked with a padlock. But actually, that's following consultation with emergency services. And the fact that deliveries are, are allowed to go in there between ten and five. We actually can't stop people.
What sort of deliveries? Just the banks?
No, T R O doesn't clarify what, what is a suitable delivery. So I think there's quite a few people who interpret their actions as making a delivery. There is a discussion with the highways improvement plan about actually the, the whole topic of the T R O and its success and failures.
Yes, yes, it's supposed to be. I mean, we did ask K C C originally for a pricing boullard and were told we couldn't have one. And that's why we had to go through all this performance to create, get it. And then it's able to be ignored by.
I mean, it does seem to work.
Well, it's, it's improved, so it's worked.
The gates have been fine. They do work. They was open yesterday before three o'clock. Even if they're closed, people circumvent. They come around with Arsenal and this and background where Turner Street is and they come down that way. Obviously, there's businesses down there. It affects their business. But they was open yesterday in the afternoon. So I walked down and I saw the gates open. That's what my main concern is, why we pay all that money and the, the gates are not being used. But they are circumvented, the gates.
Well, we do love them.
And I, I had a business, I had a bank. I knew I'd be into Ramsgate before ten o'clock. I was there half past nine. And I never delivered in Ramsgate. The only vehicles that were allowed in them days were people that went to Boots for chemicals or dropping their tablets off, security car. Only emergency vehicles. No, there's no excuses because you can get there before nine o'clock, you can get there after five o'clock. I mean, it's just an excuse. I mean, I've seen, I've seen them and I'm, I'm moaning all over and I'll say, you shouldn't be in the town. They could stick their fingers up at you and.
I have a go at them all. The guy who reversed down St St.
Oh, yeah.
To go to the cannon.
They, they know the system.
I'm allowed to, I'm allowed to do that because I live in the town.
And they, who do you think you are? And that's what they say to me. Who do you think? I'm just Trev, but you know, you shouldn't be here. That's what it is. It's not enforced.
When I walked down with my grandson, he goes, please grandma, don't say anything to him.
Grandmas are so embarrassing.
Yes, they are. On Sundays. They all think they can do it on Sundays for sure.
And so when the gate is open initially, it's because people take the initiative to, to open it themselves. Or realise that it's not, sorry, it's not locked closed. And there's then a risk that if somebody just leaves it not secured, one or the other.
Well, they assume that, that, that gets on carte blanche to drive up there if it's open, ignoring the traffic sign. Still continues to be a problem.
What signage is that?
Pedestrian area, it's.
Turned white.
Turned to.
White with a red line round it. We could do with a better sign.
Better sign.
Actually saying, this is a pedestrian area at this time and it includes Sundays.
Yeah.
And emergency vehicles.
Shall we pursue that?
Yes, definitely.
That'll be in the highways improvement plan because these, these are expensive things.
Well, that's.
The turn.
Is that a great that we presume that?
Yes. And the turn street entrance.
Yeah. But we, we do, we do realise the trade, the traders have to trade. And after five o'clock, gates are open. That could be their biggest spending power in an hour. They will race in because they can park outside what was, what was, and they can spend money. And it's a good idea at Christmas, try to let the town survive.
I think they'd take my money when it's pedestrian.
They do, but yes.
The last fifteen minutes are candy, believe me.
All the research shows that actually a pedestrianized area takes, the, the shops take massively more money. And no traffic neighbourhoods, et cetera, the shops. They, they meet with lots of opposition from shopkeepers when they're first instituted, but actually the shopkeepers nearly all want to keep them because they do better.
Apart from the fastest period to delivery.
Apart from certain sorts of shops, yeah.
Progress this, we're being asked to consider point one, which is to consider if a business in the local area offered a financial incentive
Yes.
to be on gate watch, open and closing, keeping an eye out for the gate blowing in the wind for an honorarium style payment.
Yeah.
Such an excellent budget to be approved by council. Do we want to, it continues, it continues.
I, I, what I was thinking earlier was not of a business to do it, but if we had a person whose responsibility that was. So, you know, if you like, an employee who's employed for thirty minutes a day type of thing. And how that would work, I don't know and whether or not that would be viable. I think it might be better than a business who's got half an eye on who's in their shop and, and everything else or, or whatever it is. A gatekeeper, if you like, as a job. I didn't know if that was something that had been thought of or, or could be thought of.
Council asked.
That makes sense, but it doesn't deal with the keeping an eye on it when somebody's left it swinging in the wind at lunchtime or whatever. So it, it, it deals with part of the problem.
I, I was wondering how it works in Malgate because they've got big planters in the roads to stop people driving up there. And I don't know whether they're, they're permanently or whether they're put out by local businesses. Because some of the, you, you have tables and chairs behind them in the road. Whether they're allowed to do that, I don't know. But they do that without any fancy sort of gate or racing boullard or anything.
Yeah, David, I think that you've always got to remember the fine and ambiances. They've always got to get through.
That's why we don't like it.
Yeah.
So what do we? Do we?
Better signage.
Of looking for somebody? Yeah, better signage. Have we approved of this recommendation?
Maybe we could task the town clerk with investigating both the idea of the businesses keeping an eye on in exchange for a fee. And a member of staff, however you want to word that. But I also agree with what councillor Austin's saying. It doesn't, it solves the problem of our technicians having to be there and we can cover additional times when that person's not available, but it would just take that pressure off. But I agree that there is also an issue now.
You do?
Yeah, I noticed one of the things that concerns us is when people are opening it and then leaving it. That that's where the risk is. So someone who's nearby can poke their head out.
Chair, there is another one. One of our technicians starts at nine o'clock. And then, I mean, one of our technicians starts at nine o'clock instead of eight and there's her vibe. Especially this daylight hours. Especially if he picks his wife up.
But then he's not in the van going off to do something else and someone else is on the, I mean, that I can see that that would cause other time and staff management problems, sorry. But, yeah.
I think there's a consensus around trying this.
Yeah.
Looking for a business or a person. Is that agreed?
Yes.
And you want to tell us about planning permission?
So the next matter was that planning permission was required for the gate and unfortunately, this advice from both T D C and K C C was not forthcoming before the gate was installed.
We're asked, weren't we?
Well, actually, no, there was considerable consultation with both of them because K C C will not allow you to put a gate across a highway.
Right. I know they didn't put the racing bullard because of the
There was permits, licences, there was quite a lot of hoops to jump. And I think T D C and K C C did both say yes, we should have mentioned that. I think for this reason, actually, nobody's chasing on the matter. But it is something that strictly should have happened. Put in a retrospective planning application now, unfortunately, T D C have insisted on principal elevation drawings. I'd hope to get away with it, but we've got scale drawings of the gate itself and photos of the gate in situ, which gives you the scale of said gates to said buildings. But no, unfortunately, that planning application was rejected with instructions to come back with proper drawings and a local surveyor has given us a quote of two thousand two hundred pounds.
I think we had no option but to accept it.
This is absolutely ridiculous.
It's absolutely ridiculous. I have a similar issue in my ward at the moment where planning enforcement are pursuing somebody because there is so many millimetres wrong with the drawing. And again, all sorts of information, photographs, et cetera, available, blah, blah, blah.
Give me the time you had.
And Keith did a drawing of this bar.
Yes.
I mean, he calls quite rightly that area the most hostile place in Ramsgate. I don't know whether that could, I mean, it probably wouldn't be suitable. And we hate the gate, so we probably wouldn't draw it.
Hasn't got the gate on it, it's just.
No, no, it was prior to the gate, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know that I can drag it out and see what it was like.
Yeah, I've got a copy of it somewhere.
Yeah.
Does the Chair know about this?
And might he have a word in somebody's shell, like?
I haven't mentioned, I haven't raised it with them specifically.
Maybe we ought to ask the Chair of Planning.
I knew that was coming.
Well, the Chair of Planning has already told us that we should pay up.
The Chair of Planning has no means of persuading the officers who
No, it's not your remit.
See us, they're they're teaching.
So they haven't accepted it, is that what you're saying?
That's it. But actually, nobody's pursued the matter, nobody's chasing for this application.
What if we pursued it to go to committee?
If I could just say, I do know that they've had some, that there were some things, particularly on the enforcement side, that they've had some staff absence and some of the things that are of lower priority have not been pursued, shall we say. And I'm just seeing this as one of the things that's lower priority, but it's there in the agenda, but it's not been pursued for those reasons. But I think for us, we need to get this done so it's the box is ticked. And if they've already rejected one application, then they can't accept it without the reason for the objection being corrected. And so, I mean, I think it's nuts. I think everyone else around the table thinks it's nuts.
And we think we should ask our Chair to pursue it on the basis that it's nuts.
That's my proposal.
I would second that. I think it's ridiculous. And as I say, it's not just affecting us, but it's nonsense.
Yes.
Is that agreed? Do we ask our Chair to pursue it further?
Before we agree the
Before we agree to fork out two thousand two hundred pounds?
Yes.
Yeah, my class.
That's agreed?
Yep.
Thank you. Item ten. Allotment councillors, town clerk.
In a recent matter relating to the allotments, I picked up from a few allotment holders that they feel very distanced from the councillors. And and I think in the past, there's been a couple of councillors who've possibly been delegated to have allotment hats on. And it's where the you'd like to have maybe one or two councillors to focus on allotment matters and working with the allotment officer, for example, attending site visits when available or being aware of disputes. I mentioned this in a meeting with councillor Green and councillor Heatherington the other week and councillor Heatherington was was receptive to being considered.
I would, so. Because dispute up the land moving, did that get sorted out?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, the landslide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Satisfactorily.
I think the builder has done the work.
Yeah, the builders want, yeah.
And now has now said it's the household's responsibility from here.
Okay.
Councillor.
Councillor Austin.
Councillor Austin.
Austin. I was just going to point out that this links back to the discussion that we had earlier about the possibility of an assets subcommittee because it might be that we end up with a group there where any of those members might potentially be regular allotment visitors or linked with allotments.
Councillor Cootender.
I was going to hark back to twenty nineteen again, so I think there was an allotments committee before that one that we jettisoned in twenty nineteen on the advice of the then town clerk. But I would also, was going to say exactly the same as councillor Austin. I think we put this under the item five and and see what comes out of that discussion.
I think some contact, regular contact. Doing councillors and allotment holders is a good idea.
Am I being impolite to have allotments as a separate something to the whatever you want to call it, assets. An assets committee rather than, because it is an asset, but it's an asset that's somewhat different to building, which is what the other assets are.
Not a being of an allotment, and it's all gets.
I think perhaps if we, if the remit is to work out what are the assets and then look at whether or not any of that should be subdivided. I think that's, perhaps if we lump that.
What I'm getting is that you've run the latest discussion to
For council.
For when full council sets up an assets committee. So, okay.
If they aggrieved Margate allotment holders, are they happy now? The ones that's marched up here?
Happy might be going to.
Happy, isn't it?
But I think they're accepting what's happening, aren't they?
Yeah. Okay, because things like that can arise on, I mean, that's probably a bit unusual, but I mean, I think.
Any group of, you know, fifty or sixty or more people, it's just going to be
Argumentative.
Issues.
I tend to think we could decide that now. And I'm happy to do it. And Jane, you say we could do it, but.
Well, let's do that. Let's do that and then.
Do that for a moment and then.
For the time being and then.
See what happens.
Can we do that? Councillor McCannston and councillor.
Heatherington.
Chair. See these allotment holders feel that they're left out. Well, I can tell you, they weren't. I used to go to Jackie Baker's allotment and one day. I'm quite glad to go and see them. I don't make a full-time job out of it. I've been on that planet long enough to keep parties apart. Because you can see a lot when you go to.
Volunteering. So you're volunteering?
Yeah, yeah, I've got one now, they're there.
Yes, for the show.
I mean, if they want to have a, there's others. And that's me. Others come along, see what we're talking about. I mean, it might stop disputes. I mean, unusual time of year now because you can do a lot of work if it's not raining, ready for next year. But if you've got a problem or done it before.
Thank you.
If you don't want to go out there on a Sunday afternoon when they've got the rhubarb wine out or the sherry wine, you have to catch a bus up there. But.
Maybe we, this
Take a big glass.
We could take a different lot each, too.
Then take a glass each.
Can the three of you sort out?
Yeah, they're mine. I'm happy to leave it to you.
Thank you. Item eleven then. Can't change task group.
So we've got minutes to note from three meetings and then also from the last meeting in September. There's two recommendations to be considered. First is that E P C certificates are purchased to evaluate our residents' properties in preparation for the energy savings trial project. And a recommendation that a temporary location for the town shed currently at Radford House is explored, potentially using money received from the S E K group, social enterprise team. Social enterprise team group.
Happy to propose that we note the minutes. And that we agree the purchase of E P C certificates. Because that's within your budget.
Comes within the budget, yes.
Is that agreed?
I don't know. I don't quite understand which residence properties are we evaluating?
Volunteers, I think. There's been a call for volunteers.
I would say to get the houses to try it.
Yeah, okay.
I should declare an interest because I've volunteered.
I'm allowed to volunteer.
I don't think members or officers should benefit from investment, but perhaps if there's things that we're going to have where actually they're, we're going to loan loan things to people to try in their homes that officers and members could take.
Not with their underwear.
I mean, I would volunteer because our house is there. Our house is just a mouse box. It is, it's view and
Is that, is that agreed then that we note the minutes and spend the money? Agreed?
How much is it there?
I don't know.
How much the E P C certificates are deemed to be?
We don't know how many volunteers.
We don't, there's only, there's three or four volunteers at the moment where Dean is trying to drop some more.
Okay.
But it's not, and then it'll be purchased.
But it's coming out of the
It's coming out of our budget.
Time change.
We have.
What is the measure that you've got?
We are looking at a variety of different things that people might try. So it might be an infrared heater. Or it might be, you know, a thermal blanket. Or it might be, I suppose, Michael Foley, who sits on our group, is very keen to point out that the best thing anybody can do to keep warm in the winter in a cold house is to wear thermal underwear. So we might even be thermal underwear. So we're looking at different possibilities of things people can try. And then they can have a look at whether it makes a difference to their E P C, but they can also have a look at their energy bills and see whether it brings their energy bills down. Or it stops them going up as much as we expect they're going to.
Can I just ask a question? Bearing in mind that prices have just gone up.
Yeah.
Will the measurement be on the meter reading rather than the money spent?
It will. It'll be on the meter reading.
Makes more sense.
That's what Dean and I are meeting tomorrow morning to look at exactly how that will work.
I was just being like a stupid question there, but thank you.
But for all these reasons, we need to get on with it.
Yep.
So that's agreed, is it?
Can I just ask, is there a cost? Or don't we know the cost? The cost?
We're working out the cost at the moment and it will come out of the seven thousand five hundred pounds that we have as our budget. None of which we have spent because such consumables as we have acquired for the things we've run at Radford, et cetera, have all come out of donations as we've gone along. And the water fountain and the mainsands we put a bid in for, so that was covered.
Perhaps we should put a condition in that it does come out of the
Well, of course.
Budget.
Yes.
And then the other part of it is a temporary location for the town shed, which will obviously be required. Town clerk, are we able to look for that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Councillor Austin.
We are looking now, both, but Susie Humphries and I are looking at and for lots of places. We would like to be looking for somewhere as a permanent location because realistically, once Radford House is refurbished, it won't be a suitable location for the shed. It will be a suitable location for the repair cafe, that'll be fine. But the shed really needs a space to deliver. Because of the equipment, we can't manage large equipment there. And obviously, in the longer term, if we're going to carry on and attract more people, that's what we're going to need.
Have you been to Goodstair?
Well, yes, several times.
Because I used to, yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, it's, you know, it's the massive version and we're the tiny baby version at the moment. But looking for other possible premises is on the list, has been on the list right from the beginning because it's not going to be, as it is, we have to sweep up and sort everything out for the next user in order not to disadvantage Susie trying to bring in other meanwhile users, so.
I wonder about that side where Pyro Factory is now.
What we
K C C.
It's K C C, it's one of the things.
K C C is still there.
Yeah, that building at the front would be perfect. It would also be a perfect cat over the wall wreck, which is something that we've discussed in the past with Pyro Factory's stuff. Then we've looked at various, the various shops around the place. We're talking to the Ramsgate Society about their the amountable thing at the side of the clock house. And we are going to the official opening of the sandwich shed, which will be in a in a converted container. So we're looking at different possibilities.
It should be with the green campus, actually.
Well, it'd be wonderful to with the
Well, that's exactly what. Well, that's exactly what.
Yeah, it would be perfect.
I was talking to the town the other day.
Yeah.
There's endless space.
Of course there is, of course there is, yeah.
You'd have to heat it, but.
You'd have to heat it, exactly. So there's different options that we're exploring at the moment to try to find somewhere that might suit. So we're not taking on any financial commitments, we're just exploring possibilities and we'll report back. And in the longer term, once, once we have spent the four and a half thousand that we have from Social Enterprise Kent from the bid I put into them, we would expect that the shed will need to wash its face in the longer term. So it will need to be in a position to produce stuff to sell, et cetera, or put in other bids to keep its, to pay for its rent, et cetera.
To come back to the agenda, are you asking the Town Clerk to do something or are you doing it yourself?
I think we're doing it, I think Susie and I are doing it, but the Town Clerk is helping us. So we're very grateful for her help.
Okay, thank you.
Those, oh, I can't remember what they're called, but there's a set up somewhere in East London, the Del Goddard?
Oh, yes, the blocks thing.
Yeah. I mean, that would be ideal because you get your laser cutters and your fancy computer stuff. And people will pay to use those.
Absolutely, yeah.
Chair, I think really I wanted to say, I was wanting the permission from the committee to be getting on with this, so I wasn't popping up talking leases.
Okay, I propose that.
You didn't know about.
I propose that we give permission for the group to get on with it.
And the cost? And the cost?
Agreed.
Within, well, we don't know yet.
Within our budget and the money that I bid for from Social Enterprise Kent in the short term.
Item twelve is date and time of next meeting, which is Wednesday, the twenty second of January, two thousand and twenty five.
Around all too soon. But we do have an extra meeting. But we still have an extra meeting in November to be announced.
Thank you.